The Governor of the State of LNI has declared a gubernatorial disaster proclamation in response to the COVID-19 outbreak. And all of the village of Glendale Heights is covered by the disaster area. In light of the ongoing COVID-19 outbreak, the village president of the village of Glendale Heights has determined that an in-person meeting for the October 7, 2021 village board meeting is not practical or prudent in light of the disaster. All of the trustees of the village board participating in the October 7, 2021 village board meeting, wherever their physical location shall be verified and determined that they can hear one another and can hear all discussions and testimony during the meeting. Sign Chowdhury Ame Koker, village president of the village of Glendale Heights dated October 7, 2021. I would like to call this village board meeting of Thursday, October 7, 2021 to order. Will you please, Clerk, take the role?
President Koker?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Here.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Here.
Trustee Light? Trustee Maritato?
Here.
Trustee Pojak?
Here.
Trustee Schroeder?
Here.
Please stand and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will continue with petitions and communications, community announcement. Trustee Schmidt, please.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The village of Glendale Heights is looking for hardworking individuals to join our team. We are now offering a variety of career opportunities for full-time, part-time, and seasonal positions. The Parks, Recreation, and Facilities Department is now hiring for a variety of recreation positions, including program facility coordinators, seasonal recreation attendants, and seasonal youth counselors. And the Glendale Lakes Golf Club is hiring cooks, a banquet coordinator, waitstaff, and a dishwasher. For more information on these job opportunities or for additional career postings, please visit www.glandalehighs.org/hr or contact Human Resources at 630-909-5357. The next coffee and chat with the village president and board will be Saturday, November 6, at the Center for Senior Citizens from 10:00 a.m. to noon. If you are unable to attend and have any comments, suggestions, or questions for the village president or village board, please call the village president's office anytime at 630-909-5302. Thank you.
You're welcome. Trustee Siddiqui, please.
Thank you. The village of Glendale Heights encourages residents to bookmark the village website to your homepage of your smartphones. Our mobile-friendly website will give you a quick access to a variety of tools, including access to pay your water bill, important information about accompanying programs and events, report a concern, and quick access to contact your district trustee or the village president. The village website also has a link to all the village departments, including the Parks, Recreation and Facilities website, Glendale Lakes Golf Club website, and more. For more information or for assistance on adding the village website to the home screen of your smartphone, please contact the Public Relations Division at 630-909-5348. Or contact your children, they know better, nowadays smartphones. Yeah. Dupage County is now offering a two-year crisis-only low-income household water assistance program. This program provides one-time assistance to provide disconnection, restore a water connection, and helps with fees associated to your water bill. The contact, the total benefit for one household is $1,500 for water and sewer. Residents can apply through Dupage County anytime during the two years this program is being offered. Dupage County staff will review your water and sewer bills to determine how much needs to be paid for the required service. If you are at risk of disconnection or your service has already been disconnected, you can call 630-407-6500. Thank you.
You're welcome, Trustee. Clerk Schmidt, please.
The Family Health and Safety Fair Committee, the village of Glendale Heights, and the Northern Illinois Food Bank are hosting a food distribution event this Saturday, October 9, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. at Camara Park. You do not need to be a resident of Glendale Heights in order to receive assistance, and no identification is required. We ask that you please wear a face covering and remain in your vehicle. Please drive slow and follow the directions from the staff and volunteers upon arrival. We want to thank all of the supporting organizations for their help in making sure no family or individual goes hungry. For more information or to volunteer, please contact the Sports Hub at 630-260-6060. The Family Health and Safety Fair was canceled this year due to the COVID-19 pandemic. However, the Family Health and Safety Fair Committee will still be offering a drive-through flu shot clinic this Saturday, October 9, from 9:00 a.m. to noon at the Civic Center parking lot. The flu shot clinic is free, and you do not need to be insured to receive the flu shot. For more information, please contact the Sports Hub at 630-260-6060. And remember, get the shot, not the flu. Thank you.
Trustee Maritato, please.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
During the months of October and November, parking restrictions will be in fact from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. due to sweet, street sweeping. Color-coded or parking signs are posted in four different zones throughout the village. Parking is prohibited on Monday for the red zone, Tuesday for the blue zone, Wednesday for the green zone, and Friday for the brown zone. To find out your zone, visit the village website. For any questions on street sweeping program, please contact Public Works at 630-260-6040. Spine chilling ghosts and goblins creatures are taking over Camara Park for one night-only spook-a-rama event. Reserve your time slot today for Haunted Camara Park Trail. Brave explorers will be led on a guided walk through trail-herd-raising scare stations. The Haunted House Park Trail is Friday, October 29, from 7:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Pre-register, pre-registration is required, and the tour time must be chosen at the time of registration. This event will be held weather permitting. If you are interested in volunteering or for more information, please contact the Sports Hub at 630-260-6060. Thank you.
You're welcome. Trustee Pojak, please.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The village of Glendale Heights is getting into the Halloween spirit. Halloween is on Sunday, October 31, and we would like to remind residents that trick-or-treating hours are from 3:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Also on Halloween evening, we invite children 15 and under to come and trick-or-treat at Safety Town Halloween for a safe and family-friendly event. Safety Town Halloween runs from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. For more information on Safety Town Halloween, please contact Tanya Mako, 630-909-5459. Thank you.
You're welcome. Trustee Schroeder, please.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Stop by the Center for Senior Citizens on Tuesday, October 19, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. for the Super Senior Mobile Unit. This program is a great way to renew your driver's license, take a Rules of the Road class, and have a vision screening exam. The Rules of the Road class run from 10:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m., and registration is required for this class. Registration is not required for all other driving services. For more information, please call 630-260-60650. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. We have the following proclamation. A proclamation to proclaim September 29, 2021 as War Hard Day. A proclamation to proclaim the month of October as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. A proclamation to proclaim the month of October as Filipino, a proclamation to proclaim the month of October as, I did a, American his, Filipino, American History Month. Next is a proclamation to proclaim the month of October as R. Dupage Month. A proclamation of condemnation, commendation for Hope Fair Housing Center. A proclamation recognizing LNI Secretary of State J.C. White. A proclamation recognizing the retirement of Police Chief Doug Flint. If there are no objections, I will sign these proclamations. Is there any objection from anybody, from public or any?
Go for it.
If there's, if there's none, I will sign. We now move on to recognition of the retirement of Police Chief Doug Flint. Mike Marin, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Board.
You're welcome.
Chief Flint? You get to stand up here this time.
Wow.
So tonight it is my honor to recognize the closing of a chapter for Chief Doug Flint in the Glendale Heights Police Department. Chief Flint announced his retirement as chief of police last month, which became effective on September 27. Chief Flint proudly served the residents of this community as a police officer for over 33 years. Starting his career in Glendale Heights in July of 1988, just in time to work his first summer fest, and we can call it Summer Fest because that's what it was called then. Doug grew up in Addison, graduated from Illinois State University, and began working here six months after graduation. He attended the Cook County Police Academy, was assigned to the patrol division upon his return. During his career, Doug was also assigned as detective, special operations unit detective, investigation sergeant, deputy chief of support operations, and I believe he also taught the Great Program, correct?
I did.
Throughout his career, Doug received many awards and recognitions, including five Division Meritorious Awards. And looking through Doug's numerous awards, it was easy to see how much he enjoyed being the police. Commendations ranged from him making apprehensions of suspects doing car burglaries, armed robbery suspects, a subject in possession of 10 pounds of cannabis. He caught a couple of suspects stealing a Sea-Doo watercraft. That doesn't happen every day. And worked a drug case that resulted in locating cannabis, heroin, mushrooms, not the kind you eat with your steak, and $11,000 in cash that was later forfeited. Doug received a meritorious award for his role in finding a seven-year-old girl who had been abducted from Wheaton. The award states in part, "Patrolman Flint utilized extensive knowledge and experience and recognized the urgency involved with an incident of this kind. Too often, child abduction is turned into tragedy." Information, information revealed through a subsequent investigation that this incident held a high risk of just such a tragedy. Patrol officers Flint and his partner at the time, Kirstine, tenaciously pursued their investigation and refused to allow circumstance to dictate against a successful conclusion." There's, I'm not sure how old that seven-year-old girl is now, but she celebrated a lot of birthdays since then, Doug. And then there was that little investigation in which an informant that Doug had developed helped lead to a multi-year, multi-jurisdictional investigation that dismantled the Glendale Heights Latin Kings with 11 members being arrested and resulted in 105 Windsor being forfeited, leading up the Glen Hill neighborhood, which was the final blow to the Windsor Lane Latin Kings. What stands out in all of these commendations is Doug's compassion for the residents he served and the teamwork that he utilized with his partners and later his career, later on in his career, on his shift and in his division. A prime, prime example of the teamwork is the night he was a sergeant in charge of the midnight shift. At 3:00 a.m., Officer Somerville had stopped the vehicle, and two of the three occupants fled as soon as the vehicle stopped. At nearly the same time, the police department was receiving a call for a man down on the sidewalk on James Court. The man had been the victim of a shooting. With only four officers on his shift, they were able to secure the arrestee, search for the two that had fled, render aid to the shooting victim, and secure the crime scene. It was the teamwork that Doug fostered with the shift that made it possible. Turns out, the arrestee that Officer Somerville had in custody was ultimately charged with the murder of the victim on James Court. Teamwork and leadership served Doug well throughout his career, but especially as chief of police. Doug has done a phenomenal job as chief. The mantra, vision, mission, vision, values, I can't say it as well as he can, was not just a phrase Doug threw around, he lived it. He instilled it in every facet of the police department. He's continued to create a positive relationship between the community and the police. Even when times got tough, he insisted on transparency with the community. This led to, with the support of the board of trustees, the full implementation of the body camera program, in which every officer now on the department is equipped with a body camera. He has looked for positive solutions to issues, such as the co-responder program for mental health services, or the police officer peer support program that he started in Glendale Heights. The peer support program was such a positive step that some of our officers involved in the program went to Chicago Police Department recently to assist CPD officers after the shooting death of Officer Ella French. Most recently, one of the Kalia assessors stated the program should be a model for other departments to emulate. Speaking of Kalia, not only has the department been re-accredited under his watch, it has achieved a standard that few departments across the country achieve, having met 100% of the Kalia standards, both mandatory and optional. Or as in Kalia speak, other than optional, right? Something like that? I see Larry giving me the yes back there, so. Doug has been a dedicated coach in youth sports since his boys could play. And Doug brought that coach mentality to the job every day, whether it was coaching up a new officer, ensuring department-wide training was conducted on a regular basics, basic, base, you know what I mean? Instilling teamwork or just helping a kid he met on the street with an encouraging word. I am certain that this will carry over into his new role and whatever else may lie ahead. Chief Flint, thank you for putting yourself in harm's way for the better part of 33 years to protect this village and its residents, and for your dedicated servant leadership to the men and women of the Glendale Heights Police Department. I think it is safe to say that you have left the department better than you found it, and it is something to be proud of. Congratulations on your retirement as chief and starting the next chapter in your life. We have the proclamation that the mayor has signed and the board has approved.
Thank you.
Your plaque, which reads, "Appreciation of 33 years dedicated service to the Glendale Heights Police Department and to the community as of September 21, 2021." And, like the prize package here. Dear members of the FOP Lodge, this is going to be fun to pop all the... This is something that normally happens at the retirement party. Awkward moment, sorry. All right, there we go. How many, how many chiefs does it take? Your shadow box of all the badges that you have had as a police officer. Mayor Koker has an item on behalf of the residents of the village.
Thank you, Mr. Flint, for your service as a police officer.
Thank you. It's early. It's time.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
(inaudible).
No, it's not a booking photo.
No, I mean, it's, uh, it's back in the archives. Holy cow. Have you seen that picture? Impressive, isn't it? So love me? I'm not used to being on that side of it all, but Mike, sincerely, thank you. That was, uh, well researched. I don't know why your door was closed all day. Thank you. Sincerely, from the bottom of my heart to everybody for spending 33 years here in a village I love, in a department I love, with people I care deeply about and love. It's been a truly wonderful 33-year experience. To the retired officers here, thank you very much. It was awesome working with everybody. I have nothing but great memories of everything we've done together for as long as we worked together. And it's been a joy and pleasure to just be here every day and be with everybody and watch officers grow and mature and watch officers achieve whatever goals they want to achieve and get the careers they want to get. That's more meaningful than anything. Watching just young recruits and young officers get to where they want to get to is, is the best feeling you can have when you are leading men through what we actually are in battle every day. And when you, when you see them come out and be successful and have great careers, that makes everything you do and all the sacrifices you make worthwhile for everybody. So, I'm off-script, but that's how I generally do things. Mayor and Board, thank you for the recognition of 33 years of service. It truly means a lot to me to be recognized here today for this. I'd like to thank Mayor Jackson five years ago and the board five years ago for believing in me for the position of chief, to lead men and women of the police department. Those five years have flown. We've been through a lot. We've had several major incidents that we've gotten through. We've accomplished a lot. We've set the goals, achieved the goals that we've set out to, to do as far as stuff that Mike mentioned with body cameras and Kalia, peer support, a whole bunch of different things that we set out to do and we did. I hope that I did leave the place better than we found it, because that's the goal of every person coming in. I hope I didn't let anybody down during those five years. I hope we've achieved everything that, that we wanted to achieve. I'd like to thank the Dupage County Chiefs, who allowed me, as a new chief way back five years ago, to ask questions and learn from past experiences. Dupage County has great leadership in law enforcement. The profession within this county is by far, bar none, the best in the state. Nothing compares to the professionalism of Dupage County law enforcement. And in closing, just to my family, boys, Barb, come up here. So my family, my wife Barb, my two sons, Jordan and Jake. Jordan and Jake, being the son of a police officer is no easy task. You had to put up with a dad who worked midnight shift for much of my career. I wasn't always happy then. I was kind of crabby for a lot of the times, but they understood, they put up with it. They understood when I missed some events and holidays. For instance, tonight is Jordan's birthday, and we're here, right? But they get it, because that's what we do in government and that's what we do in law enforcement, right? We're not at everything. They're always here to support my, they're always there to support my career. Whatever it is I wanted to do, they supported. Every step up the ladder, if you will, they supported, even though it meant going from a day shift to a midnight shift, they understood it. Always understood when we had a long case, it sometime lasted days. They knew at a young age the importance law enforcement officer plays in the safety of a community. They understood that, and they let me play the police and be the police, because they knew it was important for everybody that we go catch bad guys. And they really didn't complain at all. It was fun watching them grow up as a, you know, person in law enforcement, because you have a whole different perspective of how other kids live and how bad things can be, and you appreciate all the good things and positive things that you have in your life, so. Thank you, boys, for that. Barb, I think maybe this is tough. I thank God each and every day for bringing you into my life. Our world has not been the same since we met 30 years ago at Glen Oaks Hospital. Yes, we are that couple who met in the emergency room as a police officer. You supported me in all my positions, allowed me time to go back to school, believed in me from the beginning. Your support has made me who I am today. Thank you for raising our two, our two awesome kids and allowing me to chase my dreams and my career. I'm forever indebted to the sacrifices you've made for me. Forever indebted. Thank you. I've loved my time being a police officer here in Glendale Heights. I'll always be a cop at heart. As I transition to a new role, I will never forget the experience of the coolest and greatest profession on earth, being a police officer. Thank you. God bless you, and I look forward to continuing working with everyone in the village to keep the village on a positive path. So, thank you very much, Mayor Koker and the board, for everything here tonight, but for everything for the past 33 years, because without the support of the mayor and the board, law enforcement is in a bad place, and we're in a great place, because we have a great board. We have a board that supports, a mayor and a board that supports law enforcement in every which way, and without that support, we wouldn't be where we're at today with all the equipment we have and all the training we have and the professional officers that we have. So, thank you. And I will ask for a few minutes, Mayor, if we can take some pictures for just a five-minute recess?
I will add, if your missus, she wants to say something, you know, about your retirement, you know?
If she wants to, but I'm not sure you're prepared for that.
Wow, I didn't get, didn't expect to get put on the spot, but I just want to thank all of you as well for 33 wonderful years. I couldn't ask for a better partner in life. I know he's been very happy and he's had a great career, and I can't thank you guys enough for your support as well. It's meant a lot to my family. Wow. I can't believe it's actually here and he's retiring. Thank you again.
Right, kind of. Thank you. Thank you to the officers here, thank you to retired guys. It's been an honor working with everybody.
And Mr. Flint, happy retirement from police, but we are not done, you know?
I know.
Take some time, then there is waiting, you know, as a assistant village administrator.
Well, yeah, actually, we'll take that oath, and then we'll break for pictures, that'll be a natural break.
Doug, I got something to say, if you don't mind.
Of course, Chester.
I have to say this. Five years ago, I was out in Hawaii on vacation. I get a call from Linda Jackson, the mayor, and she says, "I got a new chief." And she mentioned Doug Flint. I said, "Who the heck is Doug Flint?" And I said, "Recruiting from the outside or what?" "No, no, he's one of our officers." I said, "Have I ever seen him?" And she says, "Yeah, you met him, I think. Describe him to me." So she described you.
Short fat guy? Short fat guy?
You hit the nail on the head. And I said, Doug, oh, now I remember him. Yeah. Good choice.
And we voted no.
Yeah, right. Thank you.
Would you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, Douglas R. Flint.
I, Douglas R. Flint.
Having been appointed to the position of Assistant Village Administrator.
Having been appointed to the position of Assistant Village Administrator.
In the village of Glendale Heights.
In the village of Glendale Heights.
In the county of DuPage, I foresaw.
In the county of DuPage, I foresaw.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Assistant Village Administrator.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of Assistant Village Administrator.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And thank you again, Mayor. And if you take a five-minute recess, that'd be
Yes.
great. Thank you.
Okay, so recess for photo shoots, you know? We now go on public discussion of agenda items. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board on an agenda items? So now we will continue with the consent agenda. You have the consent agenda before you. Board Village Administrator, Mike Maron, please read the consent agenda.
Absolutely, Mayor. Number one is the approval of the regular board meeting minutes of September sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Number two is the approval of the Committee of the Whole meeting minutes of September sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Number three is the approval of the counts payable listing of October seventh, two thousand twenty-one, in the amount of two million, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and three dollars and ninety-seven cents. Number four, a resolution to approve and authorize the execution of an agreement between the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois, and Christopher B. Burke Engineering Limited for the furnishing of professional engineering services for the complete monitoring and management of four wetland stormwater basins in the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. This is Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash R dash ninety-eight. Number five, a resolution to approve and authorize the execution of the First Amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreement by and between the Board of Education of Queenby School District sixteen and the village of Glendale Heights. This is Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash R dash ninety-nine. Number six is a resolution authorizing the execution of Change Order Number Two for the Water Main Linings Project, various locations in the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. This is Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash R dash one hundred. Number seven is a motion to approve Pay Request Number One to J. Congdon Sewer Service Incorporated for the Water Main Linings Project, various locations, in the amount not to exceed two hundred and seventy-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty-three dollars and six cents. This has been attorney-approved. Number eight, a motion to approve Pay Request Number One to Schroeder and Schroeder Incorporated for the two thousand twenty-one sidewalk removal and replacement program in the total amount not to exceed one hundred and twenty-two thousand, three hundred and eighteen dollars and sixty-one cents. This has been attorney-approved. Number nine is a motion to approve Pay Request Number Eight to V. Three Construction Group Limited for the East Branch Tributary Number Two Channel Maintenance Project in the total amount not to exceed seven thousand, one hundred and sixty-eight dollars and fifty cents. This has been attorney-approved. Number ten is a motion to approve Pay Request Number Five to Claus Brothers Incorporated for the Camera Park Improvement Project in the total amount not to exceed one hundred five thousand, eight hundred and twelve dollars and five cents. This has been attorney-approved. Number eleven is a motion to approve Pay Request Number Three to J. Congdon Sewer Service for the CDBG Glen Hill Drive Water Main Replacement Project in the total amount not to exceed two hundred and ten thousand, six hundred and ten dollars and eleven cents. This has been attorney-approved. And number twelve is the approval of the consent agenda.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? First, trustee Mari Tato.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Second is Mr. Pojak, you know?
Not me.
Okay. Trustee Schroder. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light? Ooh, sorry. Trustee Mari Tato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
The consent agenda is approved. There is no old business, so we will move to new business, new business. There is a request to waive first reading on new business item four. Is there a motion to waive first reading on new business item four? First, Mary Schroder?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Mari Tato. Discussion. None. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Mari Tato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
First reading is waived on new business item four. Number two, an ordinance to approve and authorize the execution of a renewal of the agreement for professional services by and between Ma- MaZiro Insurance Services Incorporated and the village of Glendale Heights. First reading. Number three, an ordinance providing for the termination of the North Avenue Glen Allen Road, TIF, number one, redevelopment project area, TIF, on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one, from the September sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one, COW. First reading. Number four, an ordinance amending Article G entitled Amusement Tax of Chapter Two, entitled Village Taxes, of Title Three, entitled Finance. Taxation of the village of Glendale Heights Village Code, first reading is waived. This is ordinance twenty twenty-one dash sixty-nine. Can I get a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-one dash sixty-nine? First, Mary Schroder, trustee Mary Schroder.
So moved.
Second.
Second, trustee Siddiqui. Discussion. None. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Mari Tato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty twenty-one dash sixty-nine is approved. Number five, an ordinance pertaining to the receipt and use of monies received from the coronavirus physical recovery fund for the village of Glendale Heights, DuPage County, LNI. First reading. We now go on to public discussion of agenda items. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board on an agenda item? None. There's no executive session. I would seek motion to adjourn. First, trustee Mary Schroder. Second.
To adjourn.
Second, trustee Pojak. Roll call vote, please.
Excuse me, who did the second?
Trustee Mari Tato.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Mari Tato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
This meeting is adjourned. Trustee Siddiqui, you have the Committee of Whole.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Committee of the Whole in session, date on October seventh. Roll call, please.
Mayor Coker?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Here.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yeah.
Trustee Light? Trustee Mari Tato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Here.
Is there any public comments? Okay, discussion regarding number one, adoption of safety standard for elevators.
Excuse me?
Additions.
I got an aide-on.
Okay.
Police Department.
Okay, anyone else? Any other add-ons? No. Okay, discussion regarding the adoption of safety standard for elevators. Can you have a roll call? For adoption of safety standards for elevators.
You don't have a motion.
Oh, okay. Is there a motion?
Need discussion.
Discussion, okay. So any discussion on that?
Yeah. What, Mike, what is this?
Okay, so there are some standards that we're trying to just shore up a little bit with our elevator code, and I'm going to let Tom Biellas from Community Development take over from there.
So we've, we're about to send out our two thousand twenty-two renewals for businesses, and we've had a slight change this year where we're going to actually include some of the fees for elevators with that. And in doing so, we identified the need to update to the current related codes associated with elevators and also take the opportunity to include the fees for elevator, the annual fee for elevator inspections and to specify reinspection fees. And that's what this will take, will do.
What could be, what could be, I mean, what else can there be standard for an elevator? They go up and down. I mean, you press it, they go up. You press it, they go down.
You hope.
There's standards for the inspection and operation of them, and this just codifies that those are the ones that the village relies on as far as the installation, maintenance, and operation of them.
Okay, thank you.
Tom, when you say there's standards, these are standards throughout the state of Illinois, correct?
If you look at the document, it makes reference to professional standards that have been adopted. The American Society of Mechanical Engineers, ASME, is the standard that's been, we've had in the past. It's just we're bringing it up to the current version, the language.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Go ahead.
I move that we move this to the Board with a recommendation to concur.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Mari Tato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor Coker?
Yes.
Number two, Republic Services, service day change for residential curbside program for select multifamily properties.
There's been a request from Republic Services to change the service day in a couple of the areas in town from Thursday to Friday. The contract does allow that with the Village Board's approval. Tish Paul from Republic Services is here today to explain the changes that they're seeking.
Good evening, Mayor, Village Board. Thank you, Mike. First of all, I want to thank the village of Glendale Heights. We were very excited and proud to be a platinum sponsor for the recent classic golf outing that went very well and got a chance to see a lot of folks that are here in this room as well as helping with the recent Show and Shine Golf, not golf, but the car show. Matter of fact, today I just got the certificate from trustee Light in the mail. So always here to be a partner with the village of Glendale Heights. As Mike mentioned, we're coming to you probably for the first time in a long time asking for a couple of schedule changes in the village. Right now, this is the current collection schedule. The village is collected on Thursdays and Fridays, primarily bordered by Bloomingdale Road, cutting the town basically in half. We're looking to make some changes effective October twenty-second, which would be on a Friday. What we're looking to do is move some of the Thursday collection areas over to Friday. And there are a couple of reasons for that. Operationally, we need to make some changes, move some routes around. We've done this in some other towns. COVID has definitely affected our weights and what we're seeing people throw away and not just Glendale Heights and all communities. And that's for a number of reasons. We're seeing, obviously, more people are working from home. We've got kids at home doing school. And we don't anticipate things changing a lot as things open back up. We're still seeing a lot of those heavyweights come through. This map kind of gives an overview of some of the changes. So what you see in red are some of the subdivisions. Primarily what we are trying to focus on are moving some of the multifamily properties that are serviced as part of the curbside program. There is one single-family property that was recently added, so the information that you have in your packet may vary slightly from what you're seeing on the screen. The first area is, and this is what happens when you get old and don't have your glasses. You've got to put your glasses back on so you could actually see stuff. Actually, I'll just look at it on my thing. This is the area north at the intersection of Army Trail and Bloomingdale Road. We're looking to move some of the multifamily properties at that northwest intersection and some single-family homes in the southwest intersection of this area. These homes would, these areas, these homes would move from Thursday to Friday's pickup area. The other area that is to the west, had some discussion with Village Administrator Mike earlier today. We need to look at this again because Dillon Town Homes currently already is picked up on Fridays. So we think that this may be identified in error. We'll have to come back and look at that again because if it's, obviously, if that's the case, we won't need to move this one because it's already picked up on Friday. But we do believe there is some area north of Army Trail Road that is currently picked up on Thursday that we want to move to Friday.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Getting back to that one, the northeast, that's the Havens Homeowners Association.
Okay.
And on Thursdays, that's when the lawn service handles everything. I'm sorry, on Friday.
Okay.
And we don't, our garbage is picked up on Thursdays. This was tried a few years or many years ago, and they wouldn't change it because of the contract that the lawn service has. It's going to pose a huge problem in that area, that top right.
The top right?
Yes. There's a hundred and seventy homes.
Top left, you mean, or?
Top right.
Top right.
East.
The northeast area.
So that area, Chester, is picked up on Thursday?
Our garbage, yeah. Our garbage, yeah.
Okay.
And Dillon is on Friday?
Dillon is on Friday.
The blue.
So, I, what we can look at, because I know that there are some other areas where there's lawn care service and trash service, not necessarily just in this community, but in other communities, and we're able to work through it. Um, obviously, part of our outreach will be to the different homeowners associations, for those who have homeowners associations involved, uh, to work with them to, you know, make sure that it's a smooth transition for everyone. One of the, like I said, we just really kind of need everyone's cooperation to, to make some of these changes, and these areas were identified specifically, um, because a lot of them don't put out yard waste. If they're multifamily properties, you don't have curbside yard waste. Like you said, you have, uh, a lawn care service, and we didn't want to, um, overburden our yard waste collection routes, which are already very heavy on Thursdays and Fridays. So, we really wanted to, that's why we are primarily targeting the multifamily properties that don't have, um, curbside yard waste service. But I, I appreciate you bringing that up. That's something for us to keep in mind. The other area was Glendale Lakes. This is another area we're looking to change from Thursday to Friday.
Is that you?
Yeah.
The next area identified is, uh, in the Wildwood Glen area, just south of North Avenue. And those are pretty much the areas that we're looking to target, looking at probably anywhere between 500 and, uh, five to 750, um, ish, or 800 homes that we would be moving around in the community. Part of the communication plan, um, if, if the board, um, is, is, gives us the blessing to move forward with this later this month. Obviously, this is a big change for folks. Um, you haven't changed garbage days in a while in this community. Uh, people were, you know, very used to putting their trash out when they put their trash out. Um, so, a couple of things that we've identified in order to help get the word out. We have the ability to do some automated phone calls to residents who pay us directly, uh, that we bill directly, and we've already talked to the village about, um, using your Code Red system, uh, to help, uh, with phone calls, reverse, uh, phone calls as well to residents in the affected areas to inform them of the, the schedule changes. We're also looking at, uh, postcards being mailed to the affected residents, notifying them of the day changes. And as I mentioned earlier, um, working with some of the property management companies and, uh, HOAs that would be affected in these areas. And obviously, I know the village would put something on your website, uh, to let people know what's happening as well. I know it's kind of hard to see this, but this is just kind of a, um, a mock-up of what the postcard would look, look like, letting people know that, um, there's a day change coming up, important, uh, information regarding your recycling and waste collection day, and on the back, it would indicate that your day is changing to Friday, and when the first day of your new service would be. And any questions that?
Yes, Glendale Lakes.
Yes.
I, I don't, I don't know when they do their landscaping, but, uh, maybe you can contact the homeowners association?
Sure.
And let them, let them know about the change, and then maybe they can put it, 'cause I know by my district, they put out newsletters. So, they can put that in the newsletter that, that we're changing the date.
Yes, and that's one of the reasons why we want to work with the different homeowners associations, um, and property management companies, because we know a lot of them do have newsletters that they can, uh, put information in.
Okay, like I said, I don't know, I don't know when they do their landscaping, but, I don't know, you know? If I start getting complaints, then I got, I got your number. So, no problem.
I live at a homeowners association, and my trash pickup day is Thursday, and my landscaping is also done on Thursday.
Is it?
It, it, it works. It, 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 it may seem like it's daunting, but it, it, it works. Um, one of the other, um, issues that, that came up was potentially, uh, street sweeping, but there are other areas in town right now that get street sweeping and trash pickup service on the same day. We don't anticipate that that would be a problem either, but obviously, that's part of our contract with you. Uh, we have the ability to, to work with, uh, that street sweeping service to, um, address any issues that may come up.
Mr. Paul, the only thing before you leave, I need your business card.
Absolutely. 'Cause you want to be able to dial me as quickly as, as.
Uh, he's, he's mu- he's much faster than I am. I, I, I can lay back a while, but.
Yes.
He'll call you in a heartbeat.
Great. Any other questions?
I just want to say something.
Yes.
Uh, I know you were a contributor to our golf course, uh, outing, and I do want to say this. I don't golf, so I was a volunteer. Your volunteers were fantastic. Cannot say enough nice things about them, and you had so many of them there. I want to thank you on behalf of the village. We really appreciate it.
They had a good time, too, and, and Sue told me to tell you hi.
Oh, I tell her I said hi. Hi, thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mayor?
Thank you.
Uh, Trustee Siddiqui, the, um, contract would call for, um, the contr- this, the contract calls that the contractor can do this with village approval. And so, um, Don, I would think that there would be a, a, a motion?
Yeah, we need a motion to amend, but. I'm sorry, we need a motion to amend, but I'm thinking, i- i- I think Trish, was it Trish? Was saying that she wanted to implement this by October, uh, 22nd, and, and we could have this on the agenda to, I mean, officially amend the contract on the 21st, if the board thought that was appropriate, if, if, if the board is prepared to move forward with those amendments. So, it's a short turnaround, is that guess what I'm saying?
It's a, it is a short, short turnaround, and actually, it, from my understanding, it really doesn't require a contract amendment. Um, it requires a certain number of, of days of notice, uh, to, from us to the village, and mutual consent and approval.
Well, I, I haven't looked at it, to be truthful, but generally speaking, I would think it would probably need some form of amendment to be memorialized as to the fact that we are in fact changing this. But I'll look at that, and I guess we still have time. Um, the 21st is one day before the, before you want to do it.
Well, there's a lot that needs to take place before that. Um, if, if we're gonna get some mailers out, obviously, um, we want to, we would need to get something out in the next week, um, or next few days to make sure that people get it in time, and they can prepare for it. We also need to, um, make changes on our end. Operationally, we need to make sure that we're communicating with, um, the different homeowners associations, um, so that they know, and if they can, um, they have the opportunity to put something in their newsletters.
Sure, I get that. I think that if the board, um, the, the practice of the board is if, if you hear them approve it tonight in a positive way, I think there's a high expectation that on the 21st, i- it'll be approved.
Okay.
Okay, excuse me, are we, is that, is that gonna give us enough time, Mike, to let the residents know about this change? I mean, a week is not really, uh, I mean, a long time.
Yeah, with the reverse dialing and the, uh, use of the Code Red, we should be able to get a lot of information out. We'll push it out over social media as well, um, with Facebook and, and, uh, Twitter and, uh, public relations will be able to push that out, too. Um, fortunately, we're not moving it up.
Yeah.
We're moving it back.
Yes.
Um, so, if somebody puts it out a day early, um, and it doesn't get picked up, and they're gonna call, and they're gonna say, "Well, haven't you picked it up?", and we're gonna say, "Well, it's coming on Friday. Your day's been changed", as opposed to having them put it out a day late and miss it, as the truck's coming down and driving away, and they go, "Hey, what's going, where'd it go?" Um, so, fortunately, i- i- it's going backwards instead of forward.
Okay, so, Dan, what do we, what do we need to do?
A motion to, um, concur, i- i- in the recommendation, as we've always done, um, would be appropriate. You're concurring in these changes that Rep- uh, Republic has, uh, proposed. Okay.
And, and with that, we will move forward with the implementation, and we'll, um, memorialize it on the 21st, correct?
That's my thought right now. Yeah, Republic goes forward with all the things they plan to do, newsletter, post, postcards, everything, assuming the board, you hear them tonight say that it's, it's good to go.
Yes, and I will, um, wait to hear from you, um, on whether or not, um, it, it requires an official, um, contract change or anything like that, so.
Okay, so do you have the motion to concur?
Yes.
No, no, you can, you have to do on 21st, but unofficially, yes.
Okay.
Unofficially, you can do, you know, whatever, you write letter, postcard, whatever. If you want, you can also put on your belly, you know, you send to people that your day is going to be changed, you know, Friday is, uh, instead of, you know, uh, Thursday, you know?
Yes, I believe.
Yeah, unofficially, yes. Everybody's in favor of that, you know?
Okay.
So, you can continue your working, you know, your services, thank you for your services.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much. And we'll be working closely with your staff.
You wanted to go to the board.
Move, yeah.
Okay, he, he had, he has his hand up.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Siddiqui, you had, you are chair, you know?
Yeah, so.
Yeah, can, unofficially, what I said, you know?
Yeah, so it's, so, so, Trustee Schmidt has his hand up. Just call on him.
I move that, we move this to the board with a recommendation to concur.
Second.
Okay, rule call please.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Miratato?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
No.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Mayor Coker?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move forward. Okay, so, number three.
Motion is approved.
Motion to approve?
Recommendation to concur is approved.
Okay, yeah, concur, it's approved. Number three, municipal electric aggregation.
So, so this is, uh, by way of information, the, uh, NYMEC, our municipal aggregation company, has informed the village that they will be moving, uh, that Illigo Energy, the supplier that, um, we aggregated with back in February, will be moving fi- about 500 residents from Illigo Energy as the supplier to ComEd as the supplier. Um, the move back has to do with the anticipated increase in electrical rates, uh, that's coming in the next few months. Apparently, natural, natural gas supplies have tripled in costs, and that is going to have an effect on electrical rates. The, there will still be no change in rates that they're paying either Illigo Energy or ComEd. They'll all be paying the same rate, um, just as it was before. They'll just get their supply from ComEd instead of Illigo Energy. I just wanted to let the board know, uh, the postcards have gone out, and will be hitting residents probably within the next couple of days. With the postal service the way it's been, it could be next week. Um, once they get the postcard from Illigo Energy, they'll receive a follow-up letter from ComEd confirming, um, that that had occurred. The residents will have to do nothing, and they will notice no change whatsoever, and their, uh, the rates that they're paying, the rates that they're paying will be the same. The only difference on their bill will say that the supplier is now ComEd or Exelon, as opposed to Illigo Energy.
Yes.
How is, how is this going to affect the payment to the village from?
It will not. That is the purpose for them moving that 500 people over, um, is that they can still meet that contractual obligation that they have for that about $9,400 a month that they, they, uh, contribute to the village.
Any other comments, discussion? Do you have a motion to move?
There's no action. There's, there's really no action, I don't think, Trustee Siddiqui.
Okay, number four, village newsletter and village calendar.
So, again, this is one of those items that, that normally comes up when we have our budget workshops. Um, it's coming up a little bit earlier this year because we are moving into, uh, the situation of needing to go out for bid for the calendar and for the village newsletter. The COVID pandemic, uh, really changed the way a lot of people do business. One of the things that we changed in some situations was we went to an electronic village newsletter, uh, in a couple of months. Uh, the reason we did that was because information was changing so quickly. Uh, we normally prepare, uh, the newsletter, uh, a month in advance, so if the, um, June, uh, July, August newsletter goes out, we are, we have to have that done, uh, by the first of June so that it can get to the printer, get to the, um, get to the post office and be sent. Um, so, during the COVID pandemic, things were changing so rapidly that we held back on that and just did it electronically, so we could make those changes very quickly, uh, and residents would still have, um, up-to-date information, uh, as we went through the months. We, um, obviously, we're looking at, uh, the ability to do some cost-cutting measures. Um, we have the village calendar that goes out on a yearly basis. That is, uh, with the printing and postage, roughly, uh, $10,000 is expended on that. Um, we are expecting printing costs to go up this year. That was, uh, intimated to us last year when we received our proposal for the calendar. Um, we had received bids. You may recall that we, uh, rejected bids and accepted the proposal because we did a multi-year, uh, bid. The multi-year bid was quite expensive because of the anticipation of increases in prices for paper and ink going into this next year. Um, we are still anticipating that, we, although we have not se- sought the, uh, bids as of yet. Um, so, there's a dual question as to whether or not we move forward with doing a village calendar. Um, again, that's one of those that we are starting now in order to have it delivered to our residents by January 1st. Um, in so doing, we're putting information in the calendar that is a full 14 months in advance of when it happens. Um, and a lot of times, we find ourselves going, "Well, it's in the calendar, um, so we need to not change things." Um, sometimes that's not operationally best, but because we've notified people and residents that it's happening, um, it does not change, and we, we move forward with it. So, the question to the board is, would you like us to continue to do a mailing of the village calendar, uh, with the printing, mailing to each village resident, or do we substitute that with a, an electronic version, um, which we could update regularly? And if somebody wanted a village calendar, we would still put together what the calendar would look like, but it would go on our website rather than, um, being placed in the mail in everyone's mailbox. Um, so, that's the first one. The second one is the same issue with the newsletter. The newsletter is roughly $30,000 a year with printing and postage. Postage is anticipated to go up, um, and we, again, will have that same situation with, uh, paper and ink costs for, uh, the village newsletter. Uh, so, the question again on that is, do we move forward with the printing and mailing of each village newsletter, or do we simply can still put together a village newsletter, put it on our website in an easily, um, readable format, and allow someone to say, "Hey, I would really like to get a newsletter", and we'll send a newsletter as it's requested.
Okay, uh, excuse me, are, are we gonna, uh, we're not gonna, i- if we decide for the website, we're not gonna make no calendars at all, even if somebody wanted, I mean, if somebody wanted one, I mean, we'll just eliminate it.
If, if somebody wanted a calendar in that situation, it would probably look a little different if we printed that out, as opposed to a newsletter, which would look very s- much the same, um, as what we currently do, um, if we were to print that out. Because a newsletter, we could actually do on a, one of our copy machines on 11 by 17 paper. Um, but again, you know, when we do a newsletter, you have to do it in, in four pages. So, if you go over a little bit with content, uh, you have to add another couple of pages, or, um, you have to take away four whole pages in order to keep the content correct. So, it's a little bit more challenging with a, with a online, you put the right, the content that you need to put out there. that you need to put out there and not have to worry so much about the number of pages.
So if we put it out there, then if something changes, we can go into, we can go there, change the date?
Yes. Change dates, change times, change what needs to be changed, update information. And you would be publishing in almost real time.
So are we gonna print the calendar and, I mean, how's this gonna work? Are you gonna print the calendar and the website?
The calendar would.
Or we gonna go by day by day or?
The calendar would be on the website. Calendar is on the website right now on a monthly basis.
Right.
And you can move forward, you can toggle forward through the months to see what's coming up for each month. So we would continue to do that. And so you would be able to see in January what's on the calendar in December, but if it needed to change, it could be changed.
But if someone wants the, oh, sorry.
Would you just clarify this for me? If I'm not mistaken, you said $30,000 a year for newsletter?
Yes.
And is that $10,000 a year for the calendar?
Yes.
And so that's 40,000. I do want to say this, I think our residents look forward to that calendar. I don't know about any of you, but I really keep my calendars. I like seeing it and, and I'm for the calendars of being mailed to the residents. So I just wanted to voice my opinion.
Okay. Yeah, my question is basically same thing. If some residence wants the calendar to be printed and mailed to them, how can we do that? Or is it just on, on our website?
So it, it would be possible, and I'm gonna look real quick. I know we talked, David, if you could jump in. We have talked about the potential of being able to print, but I just don't know if it would look exactly the way it looks today as far as a calendar.
Yeah, I mean, the papers that we have are just gonna be more of your stock, just basically what you have in front of you. We could potentially order specialty paper to try to do it, but we're also, the difference between what we print in-house, we've all seen our copiers here versus what a professional printer is gonna do. Ink colors are gonna be cleaner, brighter, and look better in that sense. And then professionally bound as well because we are printing on bigger paper, typically either a matte type paper, sometime type format like that. So if we were to do it in-house, it would more than likely just kind of be what you have in front of you.
Yeah, I mean, I am all for the saving trees and digital, but some of our residents, as trustee Schroder said, that, you know, they like this to be a, like, a physical copy and some, you know, put there on the refrigerator and it reminds them of what's going on in the city. So, and I believe a lot of residents are gonna call for that, so we, do we have like a backup plan for that? If someone, some residents wants that, so we can mail it to them?
Well, and again, that would be the backup plan, is that we would have, have a method to do that.
Okay.
Obviously, if we get into thousands of copies, it's going to be a different situation. At that point, we would have to do a print.
Another option we could potentially do is have a small number of printed, done by a professional printer, to have available for residents if they would like to come in and pick them up or if they request it, we can mail it, of course. But, and then that would obviously save a lot of costs as well. But to mail out roughly 13,000 of these publications, and it's really unclear of how many people actually are using those publications, you know, into, say, the calendar into September as their main source of what's going on in the village, it's probably gonna be pretty minimal.
Great, yeah, I really like that idea because maybe, you know, we can print some copies and have it on our cities. If anyone needs it, they can come and pick it up from here.
Versus doing a mass mailing to.
Mailing and all that, yeah, because.
So printing 1,000 would be much better than 13,000.
And we'd have to indicate while supplies last type of, type of thing. Because we won't know exactly until we go into the process of how many would be requested.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Marin.
Mr. Potek.
Thank you, Mr. Siddiqui. I'm in favor of the newsletter and the calendar, but if you can reduce it, to me, it's like a Bible. You always can look at something. And I enjoy watching, reading it, looking at it, but maybe don't send all of them out to every residence. Have some on hand if they want them, they can send out a notice. If you want a calendar, come into the village and get it. But I do, I would miss them if we didn't have it.
So we did discuss an opt-in. If you wanted the calendar, that you could opt-in for the calendar and we'd have, we'd print 1,000 or 1,250 and have them available and then either mail or they would come to village hall and do it. One of the local communities around us did a study on how long people keep calendars and brochures given to them by the village. And only 55% of people actually keep them for a year, right? Vast majority are one to two months or, well, one to two months. The other, the other 45%. So from a cost perspective, you know, many of our residents, especially our seniors, want the calendar in hand, right?
Yeah.
And we would certainly print enough to have for them if they wanted it. But to print 1,200 or 1,250 versus 13,000 is a pretty big cost savings for us.
Right now, in our mail, we have about seven or eight calendars ready for next year. At least we get that and we just take them to the senior centers or whatever.
For different.
Retirement from different associations.
Right. Yeah, so I mean, that's kind of the point of the, of not mailing the calendar out, right? Because many people do the exact same thing.
Right.
Trustee Miratato, please.
Mike, like Doug said, what if, what if we print 2,000 copies? Put them on the front desk, people walk in, if they want them, they could take them, they could take one. I mean, we could do 2,000.
Sure.
I mean, we did two, I mean, I don't know, see what the board thinks, but, I mean, yeah, it's a good idea, I mean, we're saving money. I mean, because me, my, me myself, I never, I never used a calendar, really.
Yeah.
I mean, just, I didn't, you know.
I always see them at the golf course. Everyone, who's ever golfing at the golf course, they're not residents all the time. They're just grabbing calendars, you know that, Dave.
Sure.
Right? They just grab it, it's, it's free.
Free stuff, people like free.
So I don't know, let's, let's do 2,000 and now let's see all the board, see what they want, see what they want to do, I don't know.
So I would suggest like instead of putting like free kind of thing, maybe as David said that, you know, we can say that if you need it, you can collect it at our village versus putting it so everyone is gonna grab it. No, we just need it for those people who really needs it, like our seniors. If, maybe we can put it on our senior center and maybe on our village, you know. So people who really needs it will get it and we don't run out of it.
Yeah, and have an opt-in for people that want to call and go, hey, can you mail me one?
Yeah.
Okay, yep.
Bill.
Yes, Bill.
What if we attach a nominal fee, like a dollar for the calendar?
We're not gonna give, we're not, we're not gonna take a calendar.
Well, that, that's the thing.
People like free.
You're gonna hear a lot of complaints.
Need it.
We're gonna have 5,000 calendars.
Yeah.
Mr. Marin, go ahead. Have you do some comparative study, you know, if some other village has done electric, electronically, you know, these things, you know?
Yeah, so I, I'm part of a national communications group and I did toss it out there to see how many people were going strictly digital. I would say it's pretty overwhelmingly, most people have gotten digital, especially due to the pandemic. So a handful that were doing either a combination of print and digital, like we're discussing now, and small amount that are just doing still print.
So do we need an answer tonight for this to get this rolling or?
Well, it, what it does is gives us the idea of whether or not we should be going out for bid on these. Because if we're gonna go out for bid, we're gonna need to go very soon, correct, RC?
Yes.
Why don't you just cut it in half, see what happens this year?
So I mean, we could do the print 2,000 and not mail them out and do an opt-in as Doug is talking about and adjust that calendar program that way.
How many calendars do you normally print?
13,000.
13,500 calendars, newsletter is about 13,000.
Cut it in half, see what happens as an experiment.
I think half is still too, too much, maybe 2,000 is good and, you know.
Right, if, if we do half, it's, wouldn't be sending them out because we wouldn't be able to send them to everybody. So we would have, if not too many people came in to get them, we would have a lot of calendars left over that just sat there.
Yeah, the whole idea is going digital because I agree, a lot of villages and they are moving to digital, so.
There are a lot of park districts that are using digital recreation brochures.
Yep.
Yeah, so what do we do? I mean, are we gonna take a poll or?
Yeah, so it, well, I guess let's start with the calendar. We print 2,000 calendars and run it as an opt-in, let people know that they can get, we'll mail it to them if they want it. They just let us know they need it and we'll send it to them and see how that goes for this year.
Yep, that's a good idea.
Sounds good by me.
Same here. So roll call or motion voiced?
Yeah, you could, or if there's a consensus. I certainly know two trustees feel that way.
I feel, I feel that if you had 2,000 calendars for people to pick up, 2,000 people are not gonna come and pick them up. If you're not gonna mail them out, then I think 2,000 is a lot of calendars to leave lying around. But personally, I feel that the residents deserve a calendar, but that's my opinion. I, I really like the calendar and I do use it all year long. I'm always with a calendar in front of me. If you go in my house, you'll find five calendars in different rooms in my house. I do use a calendar and I don't think I'm the only one that does. But that's my opinion and everybody has an opinion.
I agree with you, trustee Schroder, 100%.
So maybe that's why we have 2,000, you know, and we, so, Mr. Marin, we can mail it out to people if they want to, correct? Yeah, so, so.
Send us an email, give us a call, say they want it and we put, drop one in the mail to them.
All right, so everyone is agreed or disagreed, so who?
You gonna keep some at the senior center, calendars, a stack of them? Some at the village on the main floor here or what?
Yes.
Sure, if we do, sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, if we do 2,000, we can definitely distribute them to our facilities per usual. I think typically, per facility, we usually give, let's say like 50, give or take. And then they can always request more if they run out.
And I think the golf course, I would just eliminate that.
Sorry, Jen.
Golf course?
Yeah.
Definitely.
Your golf course, public works.
Definitely.
Yeah.
By, by the time they're getting it at the golf course, three months have gone by, four months have gone by.
They're not residents at the golf course, you're just taking it because it's free and?
Yeah.
I mean, they're looking at it, do whatever they're doing with it, I don't know, but.
File it under G.
I ain't got no comment on that, so.
Okay, so I think we have the direction on the calendar. Newsletter. Do we continue forward with printing a newsletter and distributing it village-wide on a bi-monthly basis? Or do we go to a similar situation where we maybe print a select number and do the majority of it on, on digital media?
Instead of a two-month, maybe we can go to three months. Four times a year.
You, we, we could cut, that would cut obviously two newsletters. If we were to do that, the only, the only downside to that, sir, is that the information would be that much more stale that you're putting in the newsletter because you would be four months now ahead, you'd be putting that newsletter together four months ahead of the last day of the newsletter. Because the newsletter would be for three months, you might end up actually having to use more pages in order to get that extra month of information in there. So the, what we'd be saving is postage for two mailings.
So can we go the same route as we are going for calendar with the newsletter?
I believe we could.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then essentially what we would end up doing, once somebody would opt-in essentially, is we create that mailing list of four, five, 600 people that, you know, say, yeah, please keep sending me the newsletter. And now we're sending out maybe 5, 600 every two months rather than 13,000.
I'm voicing my opinion, you know what? Again, I think that newsletter is important, but I do want to say this, you know, the senior center sends out a newsletter too, which to me is a waste because I think that senior center newsletter, which is just as big as our regular newsletter, could be picked up at the senior center because it's for the seniors. And everybody doesn't need a senior center newsletter. So that to me is a waste of money when we send that senior center newsletter to all the residents.
So that activity guide is not mailed out to all the residents. So what we do, and that could be similar to the opt-in program, is we actually send our printer a separate mailing list of all members of the center and only members of the center receive that activity guide. It's not village-wide.
It's not going to everyone?
No.
All right.
I get one, I'm not a senior, but I don't even look at it.
The letters only go out to.
Really, I don't look at it.
The letters only go out to the seniors, I don't know how many, I don't know how many's on the list, but.
I want to say the list is roughly about 2,000 addresses based on their membership at the center.
Even the sports hub, we get, we get one from the sports hub.
That's another.
And that's a thick one.
It's another option as well. We've only brought up these two, but the sports hub, again, a lot of park districts, Keith, I know you, you've talked to a lot of park district directors, have gone to the digital. And maybe they send out a postcard and say, okay, the new brochure is ready to view online and that's that.
Yeah, I mean, we're kind of in the same situation as David mentioned. It's pretty much, most park districts have gone to a, a web-based program guide and they do, most of them do at least send out a postcard or something that says, hey, the new brochure is out. Just to be clear, like for the sports hub, it's not like we're going to be stopping doing this. We still have to put our programs out, but it'll give us the opportunity to also be able to add and try and get people to constantly come back to the site to see whatever programs can be added.
Go ahead.
I like the idea only because we can change it on the fly. If something comes up, we can change it. If we change it, if we change, like the low league, if we want to change the price, you know, if it's $40 and we want to drop it to 25 because we're looking for more kids, we can put 25. If you just put in a newsletter, nobody's gonna know it unless we do it again, rerun it. See, I like, I like, I like that idea, but.
So, Mr. Marin, eventually we will be going digitally, that's what the plan is, correct? Slowly we start this and moving forward, we go.
It does move us in that direction.
Direction, okay.
There will, there will still be individuals that prefer to get it in their hand, look at it, flip through it, read it at their leisure like that. And so it will, I don't think it will ever completely go away.
Yeah.
But this certainly takes us in a huge step towards going more digital. We're going to 2,000 rather than 13,000, so that's, that's huge.
Yeah, that makes, because, you know, we, we also have a residence like myself, which wants digital copy. I really don't need that. It's like, if it comes to my home, it will be, I will be putting it somewhere and I forget it because everything is on, on your phone nowadays. Everything is, and I understand, like, you know, some of our seniors and which are used to that. So for that, we're gonna keep that until they feel comfortable, you know, going digitally, so yeah.
I mean, I'm, I'm one of those that still likes to read a book that's in my hand. I don't want to see, I want to turn the page, I.
So you don't like Kindle from Amazon?
No.
Okay.
You know what, if, if it doesn't work, we can always go back.
We change.
We change. I mean, there's, I mean, some apps, you want to stay with it, or next year, you decide, you know what? This isn't working, let's go back to the old way.
We'll make a plan, we'll implement it and we'll evaluate it after we see how it's running.
Right, let's, that's do for a year and let's see what happens.
Yep.
So we'll do the same thing with the village newsletter, we'll print 2,000, we'll do it on an opt-in basis. We will not send them to each individual home.
That's fine.
Starting in January.
Start, yeah, starting with January, February newsletter.
Correct.
Okay.
We, I, I didn't put it in the, in the memo, we alluded to it here just a couple minutes ago, do we wanna look at doing the exact same thing with the Parks and Rec brochure?
Yeah, that will, up to me.
Yeah, why not?
I say let's go for it.
And, and actually, we looked at software, trustee Meritato, that really mimic, it's pretty, pretty cost-effective, quite honestly, that literally mimics the, what the brochure would look like in hand, so you can flip through it, scroll through it, um, it just, it would look like you were looking at a, a paper copy, but it's electronic.
Click a button, it flips the page for you.
Right.
I don't know, it's just, that's up to me, it's my opinion, let's go for it, I mean, let's, you know, let's do it.
So you're gonna do two thousand newsletters, and how many calendars?
Two thousand.
Two thousand also?
Yes.
Alright.
And brochures will put online, uh, rec brochures will put online, send a postcard, say, hey, you can look at the brochure online?
Sounds good. Alright, so.
You don't need to do it. I think there's direction, that we don't need any motion or anything.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sure. Alright, move on to number five, technology committee.
So, so I, I placed this on the agenda, uh, based on the information we kind of talked about at the last meeting, uh, at the last board meeting, we didn't really kind of finish that conversation, so I wanted to give us the opportunity to finish that conversation. If the board was interested in creating a technology committee, uh, to take a look at our financial reporting software, et cetera, um, if for no other reason than to just review what we currently have, see what other options are available, and the technology committee can then say, okay, we either have, what we have is, is adequate for what we need, or there is better software, uh, that we can look towards, and if it's, the decision is made to implement it, um, we could move forward with that. Um, but like I said, we did not finish that discussion, I wanted to kind of bring that back around, uh, and give the board the opportunity to talk about that.
No, I'm really glad that you bring this up because it's, uh, what, what was the last time we evaluate our software and all that, like, you know?
So, we have been with, and um, Bill will probably be able to help me out a little bit here, uh, we have been with what is currently Central Square, um, in some iteration since the uh, millennium. So, in nineteen ninety-nine, uh, the financial reporting software that we had, uh, there was thought that it was not going to make the switch over to two thousand, the Y two K issue, uh, and they, the village went and looked for a, a new software system. Uh, that, what they decided on at the time was the program that we, well, it's not exactly what the program is, it's that company. Obviously, the program has made many changes in the last twenty-one years. Um, you know, when we first had it, I think we talked about it before, it was on an in-house AS four hundred, um, I think that's what it's called, Bob will yell at me later about that. Um, now it's all cloud-based, um, you know, it's, it used to be green screen, now, you know, obviously, it's all Windows-based. So, you know, there's been many changes to it, uh, and upgrades along the way. Um, but we have, I mean, we're, we're comfortable with this program. Um, to put it, to put it mildly, I mean, this is the program everyone knows, um, and we're comfortable with it. So, it's not always a bad idea to evaluate, you know, we just talked about, we make a plan, implement it, evaluate. Probably haven't evaluated that system quite some time.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's not a bad idea just to, to see what's new in the market and, you know, what can be saved, if any, and, and how it, because twenty years, a lot of things has changed. Being in IT, I know it's, uh, we used to have the rack of servers, but those are now paperweights. Those blades of servers are basically useless because everything is in cloud. So, things have changed, and probably, you know, we will find some better solutions to what we have right now. So I am, I really appreciate that you brought this up because I forget it, but since I see, and I am the one who, who needs it, that, so. So yeah, that's definitely a good idea, so I am up to the, okay, Chester, you have something?
Yeah, who's on this uh, technology committee? Anybody yet?
Nobody, it's, uh, right now, it's just a, it's in infancy, this is, does the board wanna go forward with it? And if it does, we could have volunteers who wants to be on it, and, and the attorneys would come back with a resolution at the next board meeting, establishing the committee, the tenure of the, the board, et cetera, of the members, et cetera.
Yeah, so.
Do we want a committee?
Yeah, should be for.
Don't look at me.
Yeah, don't look at me because I, I don't wanna be on no committee, that's not my, that's not my forte, that.
It would also be more of an ad hoc committee, so.
Technical stuff is not my deal.
You're like me, that's, that's.
I'm strictly in concrete and blacktop.
No, I like the idea.
And golf.
And golf.
So I think we have a vol, we have one volunteer for a committee.
I am, yeah. How about you, Doug? You, you wanna be in that?
Yeah, I mean.
Sure.
We certainly would have staff members on it.
Yes.
Staff, and certainly finance needs to be involved.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
IT needs to be involved, right, so there needs to be a, you know, consortium of departments involved on the committee so that everything flows through.
What do you think, Mayor?
Yes, I will go ahead, you know.
Cause when you start talking, I don't understand a word you're saying, it's way over my head, so I don't want no part of that.
That's why we wanna make a committee, so.
I'm closing this right now.
We can bring a, a resolution back and work with Mike and Doug. Sounds like trustee Siddiqui's somebody from the board, if there's anybody, if there's anybody else from the board that wants to be involved, please just tell Mike.
Yeah, and it would, it would be an ad hoc committee, so it would only be, uh, in existence until such time as it makes a recommendation and then goes away.
Okay.
Mr. Marin, are you talking about the software we saw, you know, uh, in last meeting, Oakbrook, you know, for inspection, house inspection, you know?
That, that is a, a, a small part of it. Um, what we are, really, it's the financial reporting software that we utilize. Um, that is the, the real crux of what we do with our software, that is the main portion of Sun Guard. Sun Guard H E, Central Square, it's all the same. It, it's changed names so many times, I can't keep track.
Thank you.
Okay, so, number six, Peterbilt trucks.
So, um, back in August, the board passed an ordinance that allowed us to purchase a Peterbilt chassis cab to replace the lift-all, so please make sure I'm going the right direction here, Rachel, to replace the lift-all, uh, truck that's over twenty years old. So the board, uh, gave us the permission, we issued the purchase order, and before the purchase order could be accepted, uh, Peterbilt came back and said, well, we're not gonna accept this because we want a surcharge of five thousand dollars over the price of the actual, um, vehicle that we had received on the joint purchasing contract. Before we could even respond to the surcharge, they canceled our purchase, they canceled the order completely and said, no, we're not even accepting this. This is all based on the chip shortages, supply chain issues, et cetera, and Peterbilt is not really sure where they're getting their, their trucks from at this point. Um, we have been notified that they are going to, once again, start taking orders, but they're going to do it on an allocation basis. So, if, um, somebody goes in and says, well, I want forty trucks, they're not gonna allow that. They're gonna try and split it up amongst the individual municipalities or businesses that want to purchase these trucks. Um, there is a two-year lead time at this point, is what they're estimating. So, we are looking at the potential of waiting for this lift-all for two years, if we're able to get one at all. Um, and we're anticipating them to open this allocation up within the next week or so. When that occurs, we feel we're going to have to move rather quickly in order to secure one of these vehicles. Again, the lift-all is over twenty years old, uh, and it needs, it's in need of replacing. Um, we're anticipating, and, and this is a wild, at this point, it's kind of a wild guess because, again, you know, we ordered, I think it was seventy-six thousand dollars, Darcy, was the bid. Um, they asked for a surcharge of five thousand dollars, and apparent, so that would have brought it to eighty-one thousand, and apparently that wasn't enough either, so to tell you I know what the price is gonna be when it comes out next week, I, I wouldn't try to guess. Well, well, let me say this, I will try to guess and say that it could be in the area of ninety thousand instead of the seventy-six we paid a couple of months ago. That, that said, so we're looking for the authorization to be able to just move on that with a ratification at the next board meeting. Secondly, um, because of the two-year lead time, we have another vehicle that is going to be coming due to be replaced within the next two years, obviously. Um, so based on that, we would look to try and get a second three-ton Peterbilt in order to replace, uh, which number is it? One of the three-ton dumps that we have, uh, that's, that we use for snow plowing, et cetera. Um, because of that two, two-year lead time. Uh, the last three-ton that we purchased was approximately two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars. Um, and we expect that, obviously, the next one that we purchase is gonna be higher than that. So, if these become available, we're looking for the authorization of the board to let us move forward, place those orders, and we'll come back and, uh, ratify it at the next board meeting. Pat?
Why are we not looking at internationals? I mean, why, why, why are we doing Peterbills?
So about four, five years ago, we had made the rec, the recommendation, um, to standardize the trucks to the Peterbills. The reason for the Peterbills is that the international, the, um, internationals were having a great deal of trouble. We were having trouble with the internationals, uh, breaking down on a regular basis, um, and there were some, there were some major issues, if what I recall. Could you remind me what that was?
You're correct, Mike, there were some recalls with the, uh, manufacturing, uh, recalling some of the vehicles back because of design problems. And also, we were finding that the re, the resale value of the internationals was really low, that we're not holding the price at all when we come to sell them on.
And we also anticipated getting, uh, another five years of life out of the Peterbills as opposed to what we were getting out of the internationals.
Are we, are we buying them off to the state contract?
Yes, to joint purchasing contract, I don't know if it's the state, Darcy, it's.
State contract?
Sourcewell.
So, what you're saying is that we gotta buy something now and wait two years for it?
Yes.
And the price is not going up?
Well.
Price is not gonna go up for the next two years?
The, the price that we're given should be the price that we pay two years from now. But that's why we're expecting it to be a, a good deal higher than the seventy-six thousand that we paid, that we were going to pay just two months ago. And then, of course, the, the three-ton will be e- even more expensive, obviously. Cause the, we're just buying a chassis for the lift-all.
So we buy a truck for eighty thousand dollars, two years from now, it's gonna be eighty thousand dollars?
That's the idea. Hopefully.
We will place the order, then they confirm the order, it won't go into production until the third or fourth quarter of twenty-two, so it's basically, we're placing the order, they're confirming the order, it's just the lead time for the parts and that puts it into production at the end of twenty-two. So unless there's some kind of surcharge that they're gonna try to assess us later in the process, which we're hoping they don't, um, they should, whatever we're quoted is what we should be paying in, at the invoice price.
So, we pay him, and we pay him two years from now, or we have to pay him now?
No, you pay upon delivery.
Upon delivery, so, okay.
Trouble is, there's no guarantee with that price though, after two years, right?
Normally, we would say that there's a guarantee, it's just the way that the supply chain has been going now, and we've seen some, some surcharges that we've, haven't seen in, I, I've never seen in my, in my, uh, history. Um, I'd like to say that they wouldn't assess us a surcharge, I'd like to see what the paperwork comes back at when we see it next week. Um, if, if it confirms that we won't have any surcharges, at this point, we're kinda waiting to see what happens.
Well, it doesn't, as long as we don't pay them, I mean, until delivery, it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter because then we can just back out of the deal, right?
Yeah. From the, they're only taking orders, the, this is what he had said on the phone too, is they're only taking stock orders. They're not putting regular orders into production, so if something falls through and we don't take this truck, they'll have plenty of people to sell it to for a much higher price.
Will they penalize us then?
We shouldn't be pa, I, I mean, if, if they're, if they're not gonna honor the price that they quoted, we shouldn't be penalized at all.
Man, keep your fingers crossed.
Okay, so then, right then, right then?
Yeah, if they, if, if, when it comes time for delivery, if they try to surcharge us an amount that is not acceptable to us, I guess we don't take delivery, but then, it obviously could be difficult because we need this lift and we need this, this dump truck. So, but at least we can evaluate it at that point if it's not the num, if it's not the number that we agreed to.
Yeah, it sounds good. As long as we ain't paying for the whole, the whole freight now.
Correct.
I think this needs, um, trustee Siddiqui, a motion, um, to recommend it to the board with a concurrence because we're gonna be ratifying it, they're gonna be taking action before our next board.
Okay, do we have the motion though?
I'll make a motion to, or send it to the board?
Concur, concur, yeah.
Concur.
I'll second it.
Okay. Rule call, please.
Trustee Pochek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroeder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Mayor Coker?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we move to number seven, presentation of water treatment plant project updates.
Thankfully, this one's not mine.
Yeah, okay.
And it's short.
We'll work on that one. Oh, it's already up here.
Alright, good evening, Mayor Coker, board, uh, my name is Chris Marshinkie, I think I've met pretty much everybody at this point. Um, but I am a project manager with Trottern Associates, uh, handling the design and construction engineering for a number of projects at the village's wastewater treatment plant, and we just wanted to give a brief update on the projects that are currently in construction and answer any questions that you might have. Um, feel free to ask any along the way as we're going to. Uh, the three projects that I'm going to really briefly go through are the digester rehabilitation, the non-podable water replacement project, and the wet weather improvements. Well, that was quick. Oh.
She changing for you?
Yeah, thank you. Right side, okay, thank you. Uh, so first one is digester rehabilitation, this is the, the village's, uh, large capital improvement project currently underway. Um, it essentially includes rehabilitating the existing, what we say, offline digester that you're looking at right there. Uh, essentially a steel tank, uh, on top of a concrete foundation. It was constructed in the late nineteen seventies and has been unused for about the last twenty years. We identified it as a piece of existing infrastructure that we could repurpose for digestion capacity at the wastewater plant, um, to, to meet a need, and we'll talk about that in a second. Uh, but the scope is essentially rehabilitating this offline digester and then replacing blowers and pumping equipment that, that support that digestion process. So why are we doing that project? Uh, essentially, it is a requirement, um, to comply with the Illinois EPA's permit limits. So the village holds what's called an NPDS permit that allows discharge of treated water into the Armageddon ditch after it's treated at the, at the plant. That permit requires a number of, um, effluent limitations be met on a constant basis. One of them is that digestion of all the sludge generated in the process meets certain thresholds. So it, it's essentially a requirement of that NPDS permit that the village currently has. And on top of that, uh, we've talked about the phosphorus removal project that's forthcoming, um, that will be another capital project. That's an EPA requirement as well.
That will be another capital project. That's an EPA requirement as well. And by extension, that requires expansion of the existing digestion facility to handle the additional sludge generated when we start removing that phosphorus. So, a, a couple of tiers to why we're doing this, but essentially, in Illinois EPA mandate. Progress on that one. So, we're currently in Week 10. We started at the end of July, so really, just getting started. All of the demolition within the existing digester is completed. There was a lot of piping and concrete work that isn't needed for what it's going to be used for next. That is all complete. The rehabilitation of the steel and concrete is currently underway. There's some patching that needs to take place to make it watertight again. And the next steps will be coating the interior and exterior steel with a high build structural lining to ensure that it, it lasts into the future quite a while, being that it is an older piece of infrastructure. The only administrative item to note on this one is that the first payment application will be before the board at the next meeting. Moving on to the non-potable water replacement project. And when I say non-potable water, really, all that means is we're using the treated effluent water within the plant for non-domestic purposes, to run certain pieces of equipment and things like that. That's referred to as non-potable water. So, this project is replacing all of the piping, hydrants, and valves throughout the plant. It includes quite a bit. There's about 2,500 linear feet, about half a mile, of piping at the wastewater plant alone of this non-potable system. And we're replacing it essentially because it has failed due to age. So, on, on the left, a little bit hard to see, but you can see some of the heavily corroded pipe. Most of it was installed in 1986 in the rehabilitation project then. Some of it earlier in the 70s. It has just reached age, has corroded through, and has failed under pressure. That failure has kind of dictated that plant staff move over to utilizing potable water, so actual village domestic water, for these processes that don't require clean water. So, that, that presents a demand on the water system that we would rather not have. And also, a cost in that it's, it's water coming from DuPage Water Commission that, again, we would like to avoid. So, replacement of this system will allow us to operate the plant on the non-potable system using the treated effluent again, rather than, than treated domestic water. So, that project is also in Week 10, started about the same time, end of July, but will be complete in the next couple of weeks here. So, all of the site piping valves and hydrants are largely installed. We're currently pressure testing to make sure all of the piping meets our standards, isn't leaking, anything like that. And over the next couple of weeks, we'll be restoring and closing out that project. Similarly, the payment application will be before the board at the next board meeting. The last project, the wet weather improvements project, includes modifications to what we call an excess flow bypass structure. Essentially, it's improving the way that staff can divert flows in the plant once we get really heavy rainfalls and we're trying to treat as much wastewater as physically possible. So, there's a couple of improvements with this one that will allow staff to split those flows better. And that kind of goes to the necessity. Really, we don't have the option to split flows at the, the tail end of the process. Right now, staff has to either choose to send all of the flow to the disk filtration, kind of the final step of the process, or none of the flow. It's kind of an all-or-nothing split. So, the, the work that we're doing is making it such that they can send most of the flow in one direction to filtration and bypass the other as needed. So, so it provides more flexibility and, in doing so, reduces any kind of a risk of violation of any of the effluent limits in the village's permit with the state. That project is currently in about Week 26. There's long lead times associated with that one. So, really, construction's been going on, onsite for probably the last two months or so since we received some of the manufactured components. But that one will also be finished up in the next two weeks or so. All the structure modifications have been completed. The clean-out structure installation was actually just completed yesterday and today. And with that, we'll move into restoration and closeout. And similarly, to, to the payment application, number one, will be before the board in a couple of weeks. The last item that I think is in here that hopefully works is just a drone video of a flyover of the site showing some of these that the village took. Let's see. See if it starts. So, again, you're just looking at the offline digester right now that's kind of at the, the start of the plant, right when you drive into the plant. That's the first structure you'll see on the west end of the plant. As it pans over, you'll see the excess flow clarifiers, the two large tanks on your right. And on the left with the dome is the existing online digester. So, the village only has one digester currently in service. The expansion will give us two digesters to complete the, the processes that we need to. So, it'll kind of make its way down the road, the access road, working its way east. On the right-hand side is the tertiary filter building, one of the last steps in the process. On the left-hand side, you're seeing the sludge processing building where sludge, after it's been digested, is dewatered and disposed of. And then, the, the equipment that you're seeing here, the excavator and the hydroexcavator, are excavating for the non-potable water. So, in that trench is where the existing non-potable piping is being removed out of and the new piping is being installed. And I think that's about the end of the video. In the background, kind of the, the upper right there, you can see the, the snow fencing around what is the bypass structure modifications. That's the wet weather improvements project. So, all three taking place on the plant site, so kind of tight quarters for that construction. But we're approaching completion of the two smaller projects that the digester rehabilitation will be going on for the next 12 months or so. So, you may be getting more updates on that one over the next year or so. That's, that's essentially it. There's no, no action needed by the board, but wanted to open up for any questions you had and give you an update on the, the progress of the projects that the village is undertaking.
Is everything going on schedule?
Yes, yep. So, everything's looking very good. We're just starting into the digester rehabilitation project right now. Our, our biggest concern is any delays associated with, as we just discussed, lead time issues on equipment. So, especially things like steel and copper and PVC piping, anything polymer-based has very long lead times as a result of, obviously, the COVID pandemic, but also the, the freezing conditions in Texas back in February are still affecting the, the supply chain of anything that's polymer-based. But right now, we haven't heard of any of that from the contractors. We're keeping in regular touch with them and all of their vendors and saying, "If you're hearing anything, let us know as soon as possible," but nothing to date.
And it will go all through the winter?
Yep.
Try to?
Yep, it will. So, the next push will be on coating of the digester. Following that, there's going to be installation of a lot of piping within that digester that can go throughout the winter. There's no real, there's no real reason to halt construction for that.
Okay, thank you. I just, I just wanted, you know, just take a look at update.
Yeah, absolutely.
Maybe we're spending a lot of money, you know, so it's nice to take a look and see what's going on. You think, Rachel, we can get another update, maybe in about another four months? All right, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Anything else?
You mentioned about piping, you know, is metal piping better than PVC or PVC?
Um, I don't know that there's a, there's a right or wrong answer to that necessarily. So, we are using all ductile iron, so very rigid piping in the plant, as opposed to a PVC. PVC is very corrosion resistant. So, we'll use that in a lot of water main and sanitary sewer out in the right-of-way. On a treatment plant where we have, we are digging frequently and we would be hitting these pipes with every project that's going in and new utilities going in, we usually use a rigid pipe so that when they're digging, they don't hit a PVC pipe and burst whatever that line might be. So, if inside a wastewater treatment facility or water treatment facility, usually, we'll be using ductile iron pipe.
And what about those tree roots, you know, affect our tree roots, you know, on PVC or metal?
So, on the plant site, we really don't see too much of that just because there's, there's trees essentially just around the, the border of the property here. But that is a significant concern when we're talking about sewer pipes. So, out in the sewer system throughout the village. And it, and it's a concern with most materials that you would use. Root intrusion can get through just about anything over time. It's more when the pipe starts failing itself, it'll start working its way into some of those failure points. But on the treatment plant site, we really don't have that issue.
Okay, any other questions?
No. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So, Trustee Miratato, you have?
Oh, I got, yeah, one thing. Doug, you remember a while back that Mohamed said something about the cameras? Do we, do we ever, do we ever follow up on anything like that?
Yeah. So, actually, we have a grant application in. Bureau of Justice opened up their grants and actually are allowing almost any community to apply. We generally don't qualify for justice grants because of, we're in DuPage County and, we're, we're in DuPage County. But they've opened it up. We've actually put a, a application in for those cameras, actually 15 of them. And one other item, I forget exactly what it is. George?
We also did for AEDs. Trying to get the grant for that, too.
Right, so for, but I have no idea when that grant is going to be awarded or if it's going to be awarded or if we're going to qualify and be awarded it. But we put that in the day the grant opened, about three weeks ago.
Yeah, good. All right, thank you. That's, that's all I had. I just wanted to see what, what was going on with this. Okay, thank you, Doug.
Okay, any other questions? Do I, okay, there is none. So, do you have a motion to adjourn? Second. All right. Committee on the hold is adjourned.
You're the vote.
I will call.
Oh, roll the ball, sorry.
Trustee Pocic.
Yes.
Trustee Schroeder.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Yes.
Trustee Miratato.
Yes.
Mayor Coker.
Yes.
Your meeting is adjourned.